That this council meeting is being streamed live and recorded in accordance with the council's live streaming and recording of council meetings policy. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in the public gallery, it is assumed your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast. For more information, the policy is available on the Greater Shepparton City Council's website. Councillors, apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the apology from councillor Keith be noted and the leave of absence be granted.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second, eh? Councillor O'Zavary? Councillor Hazelman, no comment. Councillor O'Zavary?
No.
No councillor wishing to comment? I presume, none. That being the case, all in favour? Carried. Any declarations of conflicts of interest, councillors? Councillor?
I'm happy to move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
For the minutes?
I've jumped ahead of myself.
You have jumped ahead. Unhired your enthusiasm.
I've got new glasses, Mr. Mayor. I lost my other ones.
Thank you, councillor Givenetti. So no conflicts of interests? Item five, confirmation of events of the previous meeting. Now councillor Givenetti, you'd like to...
I'm quite happy, Mr. Mayor, to move that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 20th of September 2017 as circulated be confirmed.
Twenty-third of June? You said September?
Did I? Oh, well, jeez, yeah, well, aren't I? Big double there?
Might be ten. Councillor Givenetti, could you read your motion out again, please?
We'll read it again, Mr. Mayor. The minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 20th of June 2017 as circulated be confirmed.
Thank you. Do I have a second, eh? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Givenetti, would you wish to speak to that?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's straightforward.
Councillor Sutton?
No.
No other councillor wishing to add comment? All in favour? Item 6.1, councillors, petition for the Hermitage Street, Shepparton. Councillor O'Zavary?
I'll move that recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Which is?
That the council receive the petition relating to Hermitage Street, Shepparton.
Good, thank you. Do I have a second, eh? Councillor Sutton? Any comment, councillor O'Zavary?
I don't think so, it's off-plan, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Sutton?
No.
Any councillor wishing to speak to or against that motion? Councillor O'Zavary, any?
No, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All in favour? Carried. Item 7.1, there's a contract 1774, supply of compostable bags, a panel. So do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion?
I'd be to move the motion, move the recommendation as a motion on page four as printed.
Printed? Do I have a second, please? Councillor Abdullah? Councillor Summer?
Just, this is a provision for a panel of suppliers for compostable bags, and what I particularly like about is that it demonstrates how joint procurement opportunities are in the waste industry across all Shires. We've joined with Moira, Benella, Struthbogie and Wengarada, who have all taken on a green bin service, and joined with them in working on this contract, which probably would equate to quite a saving. The total contract is estimated at $1.4 million, which would exceed the limits set by the Local Government Act, so we have to move it as a motion. If people do run out of bags, just on a side note, they can collect more bags from the office, the council office, or call customer service to have them delivered the next bin day. One bag should last every two to three days, and a roll of bags should last every year. We typically purchase about 25,000 rolls, and they're eight litre bags, they cost around $200,000 per annum, so we would like the public to be responsible with them, and congratulate them for the transition, the successful transition, because diverting food from landfill obviously has environmental benefits, less greenhouse gas, less toxic water, and less expense for ratepayers overall.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor Abdullah? Do you want to add any comments?
I just would like to add that it was good to see that it was a joint procurement exercise whereby Moira Shire Council was appointed as the agent to act on behalf of all the other councils. Tender process was overseen by Moira Shire Procurement Department, and there was, of course, a benefit to Shepparton Council in terms of joint procurement. It achieves, it contributes to achieve cost efficiencies and volume discounts. The tender process was overseen by Moira Shire Council, and the evaluation of panel had procurement representatives from individual councils, including Greater Shepparton. So this panel has had five suppliers, sorry, the five suppliers panel will ensure that the council is not reliant on one supplier, and the risk of out-of-stock compost bag at only one supplier is mitigated. Because these bags are manufactured overseas and they're locally distributed, it's important that there's a regular supply of these bags, so by not having, not being reliant on one supplier, I think this idea of having a panel of five suppliers is a good one, and yeah, so I'm happy with the way this procurement was, has been undertaken.
Thank you, councillor Abdullah. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any councillor wishing to add comments in support of the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to say I totally support the five councils getting together. It literally gets a small bag for our buck, gives us bigger buying power, which is very important, and I see us doing this a lot more often with other surrounding municipalities in the future. You know, 2% rate capping, you've really got to look at your costs, and this is a good way of doing it.
Indeed, I concur with that, councillor Patterson. I think this is the way moving forward. It's a model that a lot of other councils will adopt moving into the future, to be more efficient in the use of their ratepayers' funds. That being said, any other councillor wishing to speak against? For councillor Summer, would you like any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That being said, all in favour of the motion? Against? Councillors, item 8.1, festive decorations. Is any councillor wishing to move a motion in respect to that?
I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion with an additional dot point. The dot point is that council review the festive decoration budget allocation within the next two months.
Okay, is that clear, councillors? So it's the recommendation as printed with the additional line of? Could you just repeat that, sorry, councillor Summer?
That council review the festive decoration budget allocation within the next two months.
Review, okay, so that's the motion before us, councillors. Do I have a second, eh? Councillor Givenetti? Councillor Summer?
The reason for the dot point, addition of dot point four, is on page 12 of the agenda. It clearly points out that the festive decorations have been reduced in the budget from last year. We're planning to spend $96,000 instead of $151,000, so that's a $55,000 drop, and as far as our overall budget goes, that can be made up in quarterly budget reviews or mid-budget reviews, but as far as $55,000 in Christmas decorations, it means a whole lot to them. It's a lot, a tinsel. I was on that committee, so I know how much things cost firsthand, and I just don't think that the amount of money that we've budgeted will give us that bang for buck. Personally, I think we should be spending more money than we used to, not less, and in the recommendation, it also, in the motion, it also recommends that we disband the committee, so that makes it clear that Christmas decorations are a priority for this council, and the responsibility will be placed on councillors' shoulders, not the committee. So if we're going to hang our hat on this, surely the intention is to make a big impact. As far as balancing the budget goes, I don't think Christmas decorations is something we should scrimp on. Christmas decorations are a focus of community scrutiny. Every year, we get phone calls all the time about what we could have done better, and I do applaud the work of the staff who put together the community survey. That was a great way of giving council direction on what works and what we could improve on. As far as Christmas goes, it's our festive time. It's an occasion that people of all cultures can enjoy. It gives us pride in our town, it stimulates the economy, we get Christmas sales, it reinvigorates the CBD with excitement, and honestly, I think it's an opportunity to go back and get it right in terms of resourcing. I don't personally want to be accused of being miserly when it comes to Christmas decorations, so whether we increase the budget, or reduce the budget, or keep the budget the same, I do think it needs to be looked at.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor Givenetti?
Yeah, I'll reiterate the words of councillor Summer. I'd just like to thank the previous festive decorations committee for the work that they've done over the past years. I think they've done an excellent job. I think we've taken on a very big task, added to our current role by taking over this, the role of the festive decorations committee. As councillor Summer has already indicated, that there was quite a lot of public concern last year in relation to the lack of decorations in certain areas, so I think that our task to try to appease all sections of the community will be a difficult one, but I'm sure that we will be able to do it.
Thank you, councillor Givenetti. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion?
Look, I do, and I'd like to basically foreshadow another motion if this one of councillor Summer's files, and it's basically along the timeframe of the two months, more than the actual reviewing it. I think it's a good thing to review it, but two months is not going to give us a chance to see how it's working, what else we need. We need to have a longer period, and I'd be suggesting we reevaluate within 12 months rather than putting a timeframe on it, because we just don't know if we have to expand the budget or not, and we won't have a timeframe in two months. It's going to take us into September, we're still not going to really know exactly where we're going.
I'll take note of that, councillor Patterson. Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Against?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak for it, but probably along the same, similar sort of thoughts to councillor Patterson. I think this is, the addition to the motion, or to the recommendation, is a bit premature, because we've got no idea what that additional expenditure might entail, and I think the report itself gives a fair framework of what's happened. We've had a fairly comprehensive briefing back in April, that led into the budget process, we adopted a budget, and now, as part of this meeting, we're being asked to consider a motion, or a recommendation, that incorporates the development of a festive decoration style and three-year capital plan. And I think when that body of work comes forward, we'd be well informed then as to what additional expenditure is going to be required, and what in fact we were purchasing. I think, like councillor Patterson, if we review the allocation, and I'm happy to do that at some stage into the future, I'm not opposed to the idea, I think we'd be far better informed, we could make a far better decision. Also note, too, that in last year's budget, we spent in the order of $55,000 on insulation commissioning, decommissioning of the decorations that are around, and that sort of spend is commensurate and within the capacity of this year's budget, looking at the figures there. So I don't think we are scrimping on the circumstances. I think we'd also be interesting to look at the allocations across both capital budget and operational budget, and see where the variations really, really do exist. So as I said, I think at some appropriate stage in the future, when that body of work indicated in the recommendation was completed, we'd be far better informed as to making an allocation towards it.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, just in relation to the two-month period as opposed to the 12-month, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering what's the benefit of having a shorter turnaround from councillor Summer's point of view?
Councillor Summer, do you want to elaborate on that slightly?
I can elaborate on that. I settled on two months because we generally do, and I take the point that we'd have to become fairly organised fairly quickly. We already have locked in three workshops for councillors to discuss what we may or may not want as far as decorations go. That's the opportunity to really lock down the kind of impact we'd like to make. My assumption is that the budget that we have is not going to be nearly enough, especially considering the prices of decommission is $55,000, that's not even getting into the capital and the operation. So it will be finalised by November, that shouldn't be an issue. Once the workshops are finished, we would have direction, and we'd have a general idea on what to do, but there's not any, it's not necessary to wait 12 months, in my opinion.
So in your opinion, councillor Summer, is a bit of a sense of urgency about reviewing this before this year?
Absolutely. If this is the first year we don't have the committee and we're responsible for it, I'd like to have a bit of an impact.
Having said that, reviewing the budget allocation doesn't necessarily mean it will be expanded?
Exactly.
Councillor O'Zavary? Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Against? With that, councillor Summer, any closing comments?
Just on the fact that we adopted the budget allocation to be $94,000 instead of $151,000, there's many, many line items in the budget, and obviously, some things do get missed. We're now at the pointy end of that line item, and I don't think it's unreasonable to have another look.
Okay. That being said, all in favour of the motion? Against? Item 8.2, councillors, is the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee membership. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah? Do I have a second, please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page 14 as a motion, that the council endorse, sorry, that the council endorsed the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee membership applications for a two-year term, commencing on 18 July 2017 and concluding on 30 June 2019, for, so there's a list of names, the new members, and item, point number two of the recommendation is that to thank the below members for their contribution to the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee, Jean Young, Kate Montgomery, Jennifer Broadbent, Patricia Moran, Connie, Suzanne Wallace, Kelly McPherson and Terry Cowley. So that's the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Summer?
There's many familiar names, both incoming and outgoing, and just loving how this committee has grown from its inception. It's just leaps and bounds ahead of many other committees, it's really gaining notoriety, the event is really popular, they have a big cause for social justice issues. I really think the committee's done very well, and it really does create leadership within the community itself.
You? Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah, any closing comments?
Just reiterate what councillor Summer was saying about this committee that has really raised its profile in the past few years, and all the members, all the community members, they have contributed hugely, and we have seen results, we have seen some good results, and it is really a forum for, a platform for our community women to come together and promote their leadership skills, promote, you know, women's development, and work on the causes that relate to women's development and gender equity. So it's a fantastic forum, and it's good to see that it's growing, and we have, in this round of application, we have seen membership applications from a diverse range of community members, that's great.
Good, thank you, councillor Abdullah. All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 8.3, councillors, a review of policies, community strengthening. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Patterson? Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Oh, councillor Patterson, you may want to just, yes, communicate the motion to the other councillors in the public gallery. Do you want to read the motion?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 18, adopt the below amended council policies, volunteer policy, community planning policy, safe camera network policy, and revoke the management of CCTV footage policy as its relevant content has been incorporated in the safe city camera network policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Zavary? Now councillor Patterson, would you like to comment, please?
If this is a policy, within X amount of time of a new council being elected, we have to review our policies. We've done several in the last three or four months, and this is another couple, and some of those are very good policies. I vividly remember the volunteer policy coming to council, and I was very nervous about it, but it was a really good policy, it didn't put any pressure on volunteers, and it really showed an appreciation for what volunteers do for us, as it should, and made it easy for them and easy for us to understand what they've got to work with, so I fully endorse the, the new policies.
Good. Thank you, councillor O'Zavary.
No, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak in support of the motion? Councillor Patterson, you're just taking your breath, would you like any closing comments?
No, thank you.
That being said, all in favour, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 8.4, councillors, section 86 committees of management rescinding memberships. Councillor Givenetti, would you like to move a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 21, which states that the council acknowledge the contribution of Helen Morret and John Morret to the Talamba Recreation Reserve and Community Centre Committee of Management, accept their resignations and rescind their memberships effective immediately.
Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Givenetti?
This is a standard process, when someone resigns, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank John and Helen. They are part of the fabric out at the Talamba community, they're involved not only in the section 86 committee, they're well into the Lions Club, and then just about any other group or organisation that happens out at Talamba. They've been great contributors to the community out there, and I think it'd be great if a little appreciation could be forwarded to them on behalf of council.
Thank you, councillor Givenetti. Councillor Sutton?
I just agree with everything Bruce said. I know Helen and John personally, and I know how hardworking they are, so I think the Talamba community will be the poorer for them moving, but they'll be still in the Greater Shepparton area, so they'll continue their good work.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Givenetti, any closing comments?
No, I'll make sure, Mr. Mayor.
All in favour of the motion? Against? Councillors, item 9.1, appointment of Greater Shepparton Off-Leash Dog Park committee members. Councillors wishing to move a motion? Anyone? Councillor Patterson? And what is that motion, councillor Patterson?
I'd like to move the recommendation on page 24, which is 9-1, which is that council appoint the following six members to the Greater Shepparton Off-Leash Dog Park Advisory Committee for a two-year term, commencing on the 18th of July 2017 and concluding on the 30th of June 2019. They'd be Avril Coe, Kyle Hepple, Christie White, Tracy Mouser, Madison Wright and Steve Cartwright, and over on page 25, I would like to nominate councillor Fern Summer as our councillor off-leash dog park.
I would like to move a motion to appoint councillor Summer, yeah?
Yes.
Represented to the committee. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Zavary? Councillor Patterson?
Thank you. Yeah, look, this is, it's been going on for quite a while, it's, I think most councils from the old, the old, old school will remember well and truly, there was a lot of going on about finding a suitable place for an off-leash dog park, and we had lots of meetings in different areas with lots of ratepayers, and they were all pretty well unhappy where we intended to put it, and we tried to find a spot there where it would really work. Eventually, we come up with Off-Pattison Road, which is a really great place to be. This group have really, well, they've been a supporter of this all along, it's grown, it causes us no trouble, they've done a terrific job down there, and I'm really looking forward to now that, once this committee's in place, they can actually grow it. They can really get themselves together, they can identify, you know, different things they want in there, they can go and attract events themselves, they can maybe even pick up some sponsorship themselves, the sky's the limit with them, and I'm really looking forward to that blossoming again in the next couple of years after this happens, so I highly recommend it, and I'm sure councillor Summer will be a great council representative.
Well said, thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor O'Zavary?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if there was a conflict of interest with Patterson Road and councillor Patterson, but I'd just raise it. But the other issue is that, a fact which is little, not often known, is that effectively you can't walk your dog off the lead anywhere in Shepparton, Greater Shepparton, so I think this is long overdue, and as councillor Patterson has correctly identified, as a second-term councillor, I remember the gestation period in relation to this taking off, and there was some doubt as to whether it would eventually take off, but councillor Summer was very passionate about it, and I think it's highly appropriate that she would be the council representative on this committee going forward.
Yes, here, yeah. Thank you, councillor O'Zavary. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Your mic is switched off, councillor Summer, I can't hear you if you want to speak against that. None? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
Speak for the motion.
Of course, thank you.
I'd like to speak for the motion and thank Steve Cartwright in particular, who is appointed, hopefully, to this committee, who was lobbying candidates during the 2012 council election, which is where the idea came from. Council resolved in 2015 to make Duckets Reserve, Patterson Road, a permanent off-leash park, and we handed it to the community on the 30th of June. Since then, again, Steve Cartwright has been lobbying council to begin some kind of committee. There's been talk that they can have sponsorship with other animal facilities around town to try and gain funds for obstacle courses, for more shade, for lighting, and they also have a Facebook page. Now, the Facebook page has over 1,290 members, and each day, people are, dog owners are teeing up, like, doggy dates, which are great for the pooch and the people, because it socialises the animals and socialises the community, and as councillor O'Zavary mentioned, it's illegal to have dogs off-leash anywhere else, so it has been terrific, and since people pay animal registration fees, this is a nice way to give back to those dog owners, and hopefully, the committee can also liaise for potential site trials and permanent locations in years to come, maybe for small towns or somewhere.
Thank you, councillor Summer. I'd like to add my own comments, I think it's a perfect example of some great outcomes that council can achieve. This started well before I became councillor, and it took a few years, from what I understand, to get across the line, but it's there now, the committee's formed, and I think it's only fitting that councillor Summer would be on that committee representing council, as she was very passionate, as the other councillors were as well, but I think you are the main driver of that, so congratulations on that. Being said, councillors, councillor Patterson, would you like any closing comments?
I would just like to make a closing comment. I'd hope, when you look at the amount of supermarkets we've got in the south and the north, you know, it's a long way when you consider that you can't have a dog off-leash in our municipality, it's a long way to go from North Shepparton to South Shepparton, and I can envisage, and hopefully this group can have input, and I'm trying to identify somewhere in the north of Shepparton where we can have a similar outcome.
And this group will have the potential to have a look and do a lot of the groundwork
for us that us councillors tried to do originally.
Councillor O'Zavary, did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I just, I just have a perfect piece of land below Wanford, the contents.
Thank you.
O'Zavary Place.
Being said, all in favour, councillors, of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.2, councillors, we have a, the contracts awarded under the delegation and status of contracts advertised and yet to be awarded for June 2017. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the recommendation printed on page 28 of the agenda.
And, yes, 28 is correct, which is?
They want to follow the local law.
Not particularly, no, of course. You're moving that recommendation as a motion. Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Hazelman?
Mr. Mayor, I think this is one of the more informative parts of the monthly agenda.
agenda. It provides a, a good detailed outline of the, the body of works that are, that are moving through the council, tenders that are, and contracts that have been awarded to delegation, other tenders that are going through the process and it gives a, a lot of information to the community about the, the work. They can look at various items and do an estimation on when this is going to come back to another council meeting for formal adoption or, or the actions and works that will, will ensue. And I think it's interesting, you look at things like under delegation with, you know, it sort of passes almost unnoticed, but the female changing facilities at Deacon Reserve has been a contract awarded, BMX track renewal, a contract being awarded, and a business case around electronic vehicles. This is all interesting and exciting stuff and unfortunately it sort of tends to pass as more of an administrative process.
Councillor Summer?
I completely agree with councillor Hazelman that this is the most informative part of the agenda. Even as a councillor, I always flick through to this part first. Being under delegation, it doesn't necessarily come through council laws. Anything under four hundred thousand is delegated to the CEO and sometimes you get nice surprises and sometimes it's things we already knew about. Last month, we mentioned the electric vehicle feasibility case, which is terrific and it also has in there Maud Street Mall redevelopment concept design, which tenders currently advertised close tomorrow. And the solar farm, it also mentions the tender process for that. So these are all things that are on the radar and coming up and like councillor Hazelman said, it just is a good indication to the community of things that may have gone under the radar.
Good, thank you councillor Summer. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak in support of the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
I would just like to add that as councillor Chris Hazelman and councillor Summer have already mentioned, that it's a very informative piece of, sort of informative section of the agenda. Whoever wants to know what's happening in terms of transparency of operations, I think this is a very good example and I really, I'm very confident about whatever comes here. It gets communicated to the whole community and I think that's a point that we need to highlight.
Good, thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against? For councillor Orisvari?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yes, by way of reference to the electric vehicle feasibility and business case, it was interesting to, to learn from my perspective that Tallis Winery has actually got two recharge points out there for electric cars and installed by Tesla, free of charge. So that's a reflection of where we're going. The other issue is in relation to the continuing construction that's occurring out at the sports precinct, again a reflection of the fact that that's an ongoing project which is almost reaching fruition together with the soccer stand that's going in as well and it's interesting to note that the complaints by people in relation to the fact that there are parking issues out there have evaporated, which is also an encouraging thing.
Any councillors wishing to speak against? That being said councillor Hazelman?
Mr Mayor.
All in favour of the motion? Against? Item nine point three councillors, appointment of members to the Shepparton Showme Committee. Any councillor wishing to move a motion?
Mr Mayor, I'll move that recommendation, but I've got an amended one and I think it's just for an administrative.
Well, you'd like to move this motion with some additional information?
Yes, I would, although the one on, that's the one I'd like to move, the one that was there. That one. Would you like me to read the recommendation?
Please.
That the council, having considered the applications, receive a appointment to the Shepparton Showme Committee. One, appoint the following candidates for a two-year term commencing on the eighteenth of July two thousand and seventeen, concluding on the sixteenth of July two thousand and nineteen. Simon Kotroki, Andrew Poe, Christina Marker, Krista Rysna, Helen Jane Sofra. Two, appoint the following candidates for a one-year term commencing on the eighteenth of July two thousand and seventeen, concluding on the seventeenth of July two thousand and eighteen. John Montagnio and Cruz Patel.
Good, thank you councillor. Do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's pretty straightforward. Effectively what it means is that the number of people on the Shepparton Showme Committee, their tenure has come to an end and they don't want to re-nominate and some of, one person has resigned for personal reasons, going on to bigger and better things and this is just another step in the process of reappointing fresh faces and I think all the people that we've considered for appointment will bring value adding to the committee.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton?
Oh, no, just, it's a great committee to be on because it's due with marketing Greater Shepparton or Shepparton itself and they do do lots of great stuff, so I congratulate those who have been appointed to the committee. I think they'll be doing a good job.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Are there councillors wishing to speak for the motion?
I'd just like to make a comment and it's similar to the dog park, you know, there was lots of hassles between council and Shepparton Showme three and four years ago and it's worked out beautifully and everyone's working well and that's terrific and Shepparton shopping is better for it.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Or councillor Orisvari, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will take that opportunity. It'd be remiss of me not to acknowledge the great work of Malcolm Blake, who's been a stalwart of the Shepparton Showme Committee for some considerable time, in his capacity as chairperson on a number of occasions and also like to acknowledge Danielle Tate and Ron Popolea and Aaron Brain, who have also finished up with the Shepparton Showme and I support the comments that as a second term councillor, when I came onto council with a former CEO who's no longer here, there was a lot of fractious problems going on, there was a lot of infighting, there was a very apolitical situation and it's encouraging to see that that's been put behind us and the committee, as my fellow councillors have acknowledged, they're doing great things and I fully expect that to continue.
Thank you councillor. All in favour of the motion councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item ten point one councillors, the draft Greater Shepparton Heritage Stage Study two C, June two thousand and seventeen, released for public consultation. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Orisvari? Second please. Sorry councillor Orisvari, what was the motion on?
Oh, sorry, that the recommendation contained on page thirty-six, points one, two and three, be the motion.
Thank you. A second please. Councillor Patterson? Now councillor Orisvari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This, look, heritage is a bit like art, it's in the eye of the beholder and I speak for myself when I say that. One person's idea of heritage is not necessarily my idea of heritage. I make no bones about that. It was interesting when we had the briefing here in relation to Deborah Kemp speaking about things and I made some notes as I tend to do. She stated, "The most exciting heritage study that reveals Shepparton is a heritage secret. A hundred and seventy-six places of heritage interest, primarily in a rural setting." She made mention that Murchison, when it was still in the Compassby Council area, had a very untidy heritage background. She further went on to say, "The Greater Shepparton is one of the most diverse suite of places that are of heritage significance in Victoria." All these facts I didn't know. Heritage is history, sense of place. It goes to building a sense of place and is part of building a sense of national identity. It's in this context that Greater Shepparton has a wealth of places that contribute to that national identity and she went on to state things of the nature that the Interment to POW camp, the Durangol Mansion, the first squatter house built by James Irving, the fact that Ardmona rivals Mildura as the first place to develop irrigation back in the eighteen eighties and she further went to say that the Dukie Township, which was created in the eighteen seventies in response to the Lands Act and started originally at the Cashell Bank site, in fact historically it was bigger than Shepparton. Now, all this goes to say that on a broader scale, I recognise the importance of heritage and it's also recognised and endorsed through the auspices of the Planning and Environment Act. And however, whilst noting that this motion is not about the pros and cons of the heritage study, but more about the consolidative phase, I look forward to hearing the debate that goes towards finally passing this as a process.
Good, thank you councillor Orisvari. Councillor Patterson?
Yes, there's a lot of work been put in by staff already into this study and unfortunately for them, I think there's a lot more to come. This is a consultation that's going out for six weeks. In that time, anyone that has an issue or another idea will have the opportunity to put a submission in, which I strongly encourage them to do. There is places that I've seen that have been put up that to me really shouldn't be there. That is another issue completely because I have no heritage knowledge as far as what should be and shouldn't be, so we're going to rely on some expert advice. But I'd certainly encourage anyone that, that has a property that is listed and they're not sure and not happy about it, please put a submission in and I'm sure everyone will be happy to have a look at it and discussions and, you know, we'll come up with what we believe is the best and, you know, it's, you can get yourself in trouble with heritage, I realise that, but everyone just keeps mentioning the post office and everyone thinks, well, yeah, no one wanted to lose that. This is now getting a long way down from that, I realise, but we still have to be very conscious, there is some very good heritage stuff around that isn't protected and some of this stuff, I know through River Connect, it's, it's very important to our history, history that you'd never believe was here regarding Cobden Coe and those sort of places. So it's extremely important we protect that. We have to be realistic, so I'm looking forward to a big six weeks and after that, I think there's going to be a lot of work to do for staff to actually address it and we're going to need as councillors, we're going to need some expert advice as well.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Jivenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Talking about getting themselves into trouble, we'll, we'll see how we go. As long as I can read it properly. I note that this motion only endorses the Shepparton Heritage Study Stage two C and releases the draft document for comment. I personally cannot support a motion that ultimately will inhibit homeowners who wish to modify or renovate their homes as they will require permission based on the heritage overlay and the planning scheme amendment. I urge all property owners who have been notified of the heritage study to contact council staff to ascertain what effect the heritage study, if adopted, will have on their properties and to make their submissions to council if they believe that the study will adversely affect them. I have no problem with protecting public facilities in relation to the heritage overlay, but I do have some concerns when it relates to personal homes. I, I think that we can become a little, we can go a little bit overboard with some of the decisions that we may make and I just urge every one of the private homeowners who are to be affected by this change to contact council to make sure that they fully understand what implications could happen in relation to their property.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'll just say that it is a draft heritage study, it's not actually going to be, maybe not going to be actually as it is here. We're looking for public consultation, we're looking for the people that may be affected to make sure they put in their comments and then everything will be considered before we make a final decision.
Absolutely. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
I would agree with councillor Shirley Sutton that it is just a draft and this is a perfect opportunity for the community and whoever wants to have, give us a feedback, so that's the opportunity there. Also, I would also like to acknowledge the hard work that has been put in by the committee and the Heritage Advisory Committee has done a wonderful job in a sense that I'm a council representative on this committee and it's been only a few months, but I know that this work was going on for the last two years and I have seen the, the passion among the committee members regarding preservation of heritage and our history in the municipality. So I think that is something that we need to acknowledge because this, this level of work would not be there if we did not have the passion from our community members. So I really want to congratulate them on their, on this excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I do appreciate the point of view of councillor Jivenetti in that a man's home or woman's home should be their castle. If you buy a property and expect to be able to subdivide or renovate and that suddenly has a heritage overlay slapped on it, that can certainly seem like an unfair course of action and we often see the repercussions of that in terms of submissions in planning permits. The issue here is that heritage is always going to be contentious, there is a public vibe that we have lost a lot of our heritage and there really isn't much left. The fact that we've found a hundred and seventy sites that potentially could be listed with, as a heritage site is phenomenal. I think the work that's been involved in this document has been enormous. There is obviously a line that needs to be drawn, what is heritage and what isn't. There was a joke earlier, someone was saying, "What if Ned Kelly used the latrine? Does that mean we can't upgrade the toilets?" So, you know, there will be a line, we're going to use our common sense, it's just the beginning of a very comprehensive process. If you get a letter that says you may or may not get a heritage overlay slapped on your property, please engage with us, now's the time. It doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be restrictions, it's just a process. So it ties in nicely with our heritage grants that are also available and that could actually work in favour of the property. So, yeah, we're just working things out as we go.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Okay, that being said, before I hand back to councillor Orisvari, I'll just say that no doubt we'll be looking forward to some robust discussions and submissions in regard to this issue. So councillor Orisvari, any closing comments?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr Mayor. The couple of things that jumped out at me and first and foremost, foremost is the use of the word common sense by councillor Summer and that's the flower that doesn't grow in everyone's garden and I've used that before.
You have.
But the heritage overlays, which will ultimately be restrictive and prescriptive, are also not lost on me in the sense that the comments made by councillor Jivenetti in relation to the distinction between homeownership and public buildings is a very real and relevant consideration. But I'd like to go at pains to emphasise the fact that this is just going out for public consultation. Sometimes we get a bit emotional, a bit passionate about the fact that this is the final product, it's not the final product and heritage, heritage like so many planning outcomes, it would be the single biggest pain in the proverbial for any council. So I would urge those people that would potentially consider themselves to be most affected to actually put it down on paper and actually be quite vocal about it because it's an opportunity that if you don't utilise, it will be lost. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Indeed, thank you councillor Orisvari. All in favour of the motion councillors? Against? Item ten point two, the Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee nomination of committee representatives. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah, did I see your hand fly up there?
Sorry, I was, maybe I, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. What's the motion you'd like to move councillor Abdullah?
The motion, the recommendation on page forty-two. Yeah, I would like, sorry?
Yes, correct.
Sorry.
Forty-two. You're right.
Okay. I would like to move the recommendation on page forty-two as a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to that motion?
Yeah, it's about the Heritage Advisory Committee nomination of community representatives. We have got three nominations and having considered the nominations received for appointment to the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Sorry councillor Abdullah, could you just make note of, since that councillor Jivenetti's left the room? Continue, sorry councillor Abdullah.
It's about the appointment of the community representatives to the Heritage Advisory Committee for a two-year term concluding on seventeen July two thousand and nineteen. So we have got John Richards Laurie, Evan Lloyd and Robyn Slay and the second point is about the, so yeah, so just want to say that it's fantastic to see that we have got such passion, as I've said before, the passion about heritage and preservation of our history and heritage is evident from these applications and I would be happy to see these members continuing on the Heritage Advisory Committee and contributing to the committee. And secondly, to thank outgoing member Gary, you have to help me with this pronunciation, for his contribution to the Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee.
For his contribution to the Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee, and I've seen Gary on the committee, and he's always, you know, he has made wonderful contributions, and very, so it's sad to see that a very active member of the committee is leaving, but I'm very glad to see that all the contribution that he has made, so would really want to thank Gary for all the contributions that he had made.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Summer?
It's all been said, thank you.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak in support of the motion? No. Councillor Abdullah?
No, thanks.
Thank you. All in favour of the motion? Against? We'll continue on, councillors. I've just sent the CEO to check on councillor Jivenetti. We'll just pause for ten seconds until councillor Jivenetti assumes his seat. All good, councillor?
Mayor, I had two words.
It's okay, I saw the CPR that the CEO gave you in the photo. Item ten point three, councillors, the adoption of addendum to the Urban Design Framework, Shepparton North and South Business Areas, July two thousand and seventeen. Any councillor wishing to move a motion?
Mr Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page forty-seven of the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Hazelman?
Just very, very briefly, Mr Mayor, this is essentially an administrative process in the preparation of a Planning Scheme Amendment. A month ago, council resolved to adopt the Urban Design Framework for Shepparton North and South Business Areas, and now is a process to moving forward to incorporating it into the planning scheme, there's a Planning Scheme Amendment, it becomes another public process. And as indicated in the report, there has been a number of people making submissions, comment, contributions, so no doubt this will be a fairly robust sort of a process with a lot of interest, a lot of submissions, given what's going on in both the North and the South.
Good. Thank you. Councillor Patterson?
No, I think councillor Hazelman did a very good job of summarising that, but I will say that I think it's very ordinary, the case of this whole adoption of this, that there's lots to be, lots to happen in the future, was that what?
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak in support of the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
The time for debate is going to come in the future.
Indeed. All in favour of the motion, councillors? Against? Item eleven, councillors' tabled motions. We have none to report. Item twelve, reports from council delegates to other bodies, nil. Item thirteen, reports on special committees and advisory committees, nil received. Any notice of motion, amendment, or rescissions? Item fourteen, nil received. Item fifteen's documents for signing and sealing. Item fifteen point one, there's a document for signing and sealing. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in reference to that? Councillor Jivenetti?
Mayor, I'm happy to move the motion on page fifty-one.
The recommendation on page fifty-one?
Recommendation as a motion, that the council authorised the chief executive officer to sign and seal the following document. Transfer of land from the Guru Nanak Sikh Society Shepparton to Greater Shepparton City Council for the road widening on Doyle's Road.
Good, thank you. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Jivenetti?
Straightforward, Mr Mayor. We obviously widened the road in that area, and we've needed to utilise some of the land that the Sikh temple was on, and they've now handed that land over to the Greater Shepparton City Council.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton? No comment? Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any councillor wishing to speak in support of the motion? None. Councillor Jivenetti?
Oh, no, Mr Mayor.
All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item sixteen point one, councillors. Councillors' Community Interaction and Briefing Programme. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Orisvari? What motion would you like to move, councillor Orisvari?
I'd like to move the motion on page fifty-three, that the summary of the council's Community Interaction and Briefing Programme be received.
Do I have a second to? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, it speaks for itself, thank you.
Rather rushed.
It speaks for itself, Mr Mayor.
It does, thank you.
Couldn't hear it.
Councillor Sutton, would you like to?
It speaks for itself, Mr Mayor.
Very good. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
I just don't want to lose the opportunity to say how diverse our roles actually are. Admittedly, the mayor has probably attended most of these, but community interaction is so diverse and so vast, and we have these opportunities to see pockets of the community that we wouldn't normally be exposed to, and the trick, I guess, is trying to enable and encourage people from the community to come to some of these events with us. I mean, we've had the Equality Roadshow, Inclusion Planning, we had the launch of Refugee Week, and the Women's Charter Advisory Alliance Committee's Movie Night, we had the GV Concert Orchestra, which was just incredible, we launched an urban forest strategy, small-town catch-ups, things are just going gangbusters. I'm really looking forward to seeing the Sporting Hall of Fame coming up in the future, and these are all just preliminary things for future work, so, yeah, it's great.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I think sometimes we underestimate how important this is, and I'll give you one small example. Here, several of the councils went to the Ruipan Education Activity Centre and had lunch over there. There's a group that put on a six-dollar lunch, which we all forgot to pay, which may I add, I paid you alone. And, you know, just on the, you know, we were discussing it in the library with Libera and how it goes, and she just brought up a simple point to councillor Jivenetti about no-disable parking at the front, and councillor Jivenetti's addressed that. And that's what this is about in a lot of ways, it's just getting out and meeting people in their locations so we can have a better contact, better understanding, and it all works better. So whilst I appreciate it comes up all the time and it explains itself, I think sometimes we just can forget how important it is.
No, it's about grassroots engagement, and that's what...
That's what I said, Mr Mayor.
Thought I'd just paraphrase your comments, councillor Patterson. That being said, any other councillor wishing to speak against? No? No, back to you, councillor Orisvari.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, and one other one that we did attend was the Maritna Men's Shed Monthly Barbecue, and that was very interesting and informative as well, because it reflected and showed how much work they actually do.
Good, thank you. All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Assemblies of councillors, councillor item seventeen point one, I think on page, sorry, sixty-five, assemblies of councillors, yes. Any councillor wishing to move a motion in regard to that? Councillor Jivenetti? What motion would that be? Councillor Jivenetti?
Oh, sorry, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move that the council note the record of assemblies of councillors on page...
Sixty, sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Yep, good, thank you. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Jivenetti?
It's just a straightforward requirement, Mr Mayor, indicating the number of times we've met as a council, particularly with senior directors and the CEO, so it's just a statutory requirement that we record these meetings.
Good, thank you. Councillor Sutton? Any comment? No? Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'm just referring to one of the assemblies here, the briefing session of the twentieth of June. The listing of councillors present doesn't match up with, there's a bit of an error in there. In fact, I think I was actually present on this day and declared a conflict of interest in this matter, and it's not recorded in the assembly, unless I've got the date wrong, but I very much doubt it.
What page is that on, councillor Hazelman?
Page sixty.
Oh, yes, matter number one? Can we note that? Yes, thank you. Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion?
Just a clarification, on pages fifty-four and fifty-five, briefing session sixteenth of June, my memory serves me that I attended this briefing session, but my name isn't on any of those items.
On page fifty, what, councillor? Fifty-four?
Four and fifty-five.
On the sixteenth of June?
Yes. Can we lay it on the table?
No. Are you confident that you were here?
Ninety-nine percent sure.
Yeah. But councillor, if we can establish that, we will then make a change of that.
We reflect it in the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
First time we've been caught up on that, haven't we? That being said, councillor Hazelman, yes, you've spoken. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against? Councillor Jivenetti?
I'm straight forward.
All in favour? All in favour, councillors? Summer? All in favour? Yes. Against? Any urgent other business not included on the agenda, councillors? None. Public question time.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we have two questions tonight from Mr John Gray, and John's in the audience, so welcome, John. First question is, when is the Greater Shepparton City Council Local Law number two, processes of local government meetings and common seal, due for review? John, the Greater Shepparton City Council Local Law that you refer to is due to sunset on the fifteenth of May two thousand and nineteen. Officers plan to commence the review later this year, and we invite public comment on any proposed changes throughout the process. Question two, before any operations to the Maud Street Mall are made, is it council's intention to randomly telephone, survey, or face-to-face a statistically viable group of the general public as to their views? The response to that is, once concept designs have been received, for each of the four tendered options, they will be presented to council for consideration. At this time, council will decide how to proceed, including the form of any public consultation for further feedback. Whilst not finalised, this consultation will likely consist of a public survey as well as targeted engagement with key stakeholders, and council is anticipating to provide opportunities for information sessions and face-to-face consultation on the concept options. It is envisaged that the consultation will be held in a similar format to the most recent mall activation consultation, which included stakeholder briefings, public information sessions, online survey, and onsite consultation locations. Thank you, Mr Mayor, that's all.
Thank you, Mr Harriet. That being said, councillors, that's the end of our meeting, so I'll declare the meeting closed at six thirty-five. Thank you for your attendance.
You're five minutes over. The hour.